Hey, welcome back, everybody. We're in the afternoon session of August 26. Our next agenda is an action item slash public hearing. This is the Valley County Fiscal Year 2025 Budget Hearing. I'll open up the public hearing, and at this time, I'll turn it over to our esteemed clerk, Mr. Miller, to explain the process.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, good afternoon. Douglas Miller, elected Valley County Clerk. I appreciate the opportunity to provide you with an overview of what has been, the work that's been conducted in order to prepare for the public hearing today for the fiscal year 2025 budget. I do want to remind the Commissioners that today you are not adopting the budget. You are just hearing from the public if there are any issues, and you're hearing from staff regarding the creation of the fiscal year 2025 budget. The budget will actually be adopted by resolution next week is what we have on the agenda. Could the Commissioners technically approve the budget today? Yes, but I would highly recommend that you wait until next week to see if there's any further comment. And then ultimately, again, the Commissioners will approve the budget via resolution next Tuesday.
Thank you, Doug, for that reminder, because I did have that off.
You're very welcome. To begin, I kind of want to give you, I like to give the Commissioners and the public an overview of what it takes to develop a budget for Valley County. March 19, 2024, we prepared a letter to submit to all of the elected officials and department heads, giving them an overview of the process. Commissioners, this is, in fact, a letter that was submitted to all of the elected officials and department heads, which provides them kind of an overview of what to expect and what the expectations are from them in order for them to provide us with what their requests are. First off, we asked them, or we explained to them the A budget, that the Commissioners ultimately decide the salary budget. But if there's any new positions that they are wanting to create, the process is to vet those with the Human Resources Director, Mike Savoy. Again, Commissioners, Valley County Clerk, myself, and my chief deputy Gabrielle Knapp provided the elected officials and department heads with the fiscal year 2025 budget request forms for their offices. Basically, that's the report that we pulled from Tyler from ERP Pro 10 in order for them to review what the expenses have been and what their requests are going to be. The elected officials and department heads make their expense requests by filling in the fiscal year 2025 budget request forms, and then they provide them back to our office. Once our office receives those, we begin scheduling appointments with the elected officials and department heads to review their requests. And what I try to do is prep them about potential questions that you guys are going to ask, right? The questions that the Commissioners are going to ask. But again, the next bullet point is the Valley County Clerk and Chief Deputy Knapp began meeting with the elected officials and department heads individually to review requested expenses and also to review projected revenue that their department may be bringing in. So at that point in time, we have an initial meeting with them, but there are departments that we have multiple meetings with. Commissioners, we met with the Road Department, I believe, four times. We meet with, met with the Sheriff's Office about four times as well. So there are those larger departments that we don't just have one initial meeting with them. We have multiple meetings with them before we schedule them for the workshops, before the Commissioners. This is just kind of gives you an overview. Two elected officials and department heads present their new position requests and budget requests to Valley County Board of County Commissioners during budget workshops. Again, Commissioners, just to clarify, we meet with them, and then we schedule them for the budget workshops, for the ultimate budget workshops to be conducted in this room. Valley County Board of Commissioners review budget requests for 64 different funds. I don't know if you guys realize that, but that's how many different funds there are that you guys review, that we review, that you're ultimately responsible for budgeting for. The budget workshops begin this year, May 13, 2024, and the final budget workshop concluded on August 12 of 2024. I do feel that we had great budget workshops this year. We had the opportunity for the elected officials and department heads to come in, for you guys to ask, you know, specific questions related to their budget requests. And I do still, I'm still believe that the process that we have implemented, I think about five years ago, really works. If there are any tweaks that you think we need to make, please let us know, and we'll implement that for fiscal year 2026. But the process that we have implemented, I do think, gives us an opportunity to review their requests first, the Clerk's office, to review their requests first, to give suggestions, to give our feedback. And then ultimately, those departments, elected officials, come to the Commissioners and have those workshops.
And I want to say publicly, thank you for all your team's work, your work. It saves, I mean, it's a great working relationship, and it is.
Appreciate that.
Yeah, very open and fully disclosed.
Thank you.
And you didn't even mention the CIP process.
We'll be mentioning that, Commissioner Moplin, that is included.
So can, so anyway, to cut down those 64 funds to about three?
It would be, I wish. It's not possible.
Change state code? Ooh, tell them why to.
That's the biggest thing I'm still grappling with, man. Money, so many different funds.
So many different funds.
And where they go.
Yep. And that doesn't, yes. Valley County Commissioners provide guidance to the Clerk's office regarding proposed fiscal year 2025 budget. It's not just our work, it's also the work that the Commissioners do. Commissioners provide expenditure guidance to the Clerk office for fiscal year 2025. Again, I appreciate the Commissioners', you know, guidance in explaining to us and wanting to know full details of what are we paying in contributions? What are we paying here? You guys really got involved, which, again, is your role, but I truly appreciate that, and then providing that guidance to the Clerk's office. All departments must submit requests for new positions to Human Resources to be vetted, have job descriptions written, and determine a pay scale. That's the responsibility of our Human Resource Director, Mike Savoy. And I do think that's a wise process that has been implemented by the Commissioners. New positions being requested for fiscal year 2025 are a position within the Valley County Planning and Zoning Department. I do feel that that is, excuse me, I don't feel, that position is going to be a tech technician position, is my understanding. And that is a position that has been vetted with HR and ultimately presented to the Commissioners. The next position that was created is a janitorial positions. Valley County has discovered that contracting for janitorial services for Valley County has been significant, it has significantly increased year after year. And the services that we are getting aren't always well received. There is a, you know, a belief that if we bring that in-house, it could be monitored, it could be supervised a little bit better. So there was a discussion, decision this year to fund janitorial positions within the Facilities Department. Those positions were vetted with HR and ultimately placed into the fiscal year, presented to the Commissioners and then budgeted for. Lastly, new positions is a part-time budget for the Valley County Sheriff's Office. Commissioners, you did hear from the Sheriff's Office for a request for a part-time budget in order to bring on some of these seasoned deputies or higher-ranking individuals, and just having them do part-time patrol work.
The FTE is that, is it just a half? Or is, how many does he have that we're adding part-time? One full-time?
We've never exactly determined how much.
It was just an amount. The amount that was budgeted for was 50,000.
Is that going to help eliminate the overtime?
It should.
That's kind of the goal.
And that, ultimately, on paper, that should eliminate the significant amount of overtime that's being paid out.
And also, and I don't know whether you guys know it or not, but the new positions have to go through the STAR requirement also. How does it improve our service transparency, accountable, accountability, and responsiveness to the community?
Yes, sir. Thank you for pointing that, Commissioner Moplin. Again, just to kind of give you into the weeds overview, the chief deputy enters all the budget requests into the financial software. The Clerk and the chief deputy analyze projected revenue and projected cash forward for fiscal year 2025 and enter projected figures into the software. I also consulted with the Treasurer this year on projected revenue and projected cash forward to make sure that, you know, another elected official is analyzing, and of course, the Treasurer's Office, because they handle the money, just to make sure that my projections are accurate and are within reason, right? So I did consult with the Treasurer default regarding projected revenue, projected cash forward, just to share with the Commissioners again, kind of in-the-weeds look at the preparation of the budget, what it entails. Clerk's Office also works with the Assessor's Office to determine the net taxable market value and new construction values. Commissioners, you're fully aware that that is another part of our role with the Clerk's Office, is preparing the L-2 worksheets for tax year 2024, fiscal year 2025, for all of the taxing districts within Valley County. Those have already been submitted to all the taxing districts, and then we're waiting for those to be returned, to be certified, but that's another.
I was going to ask, did everybody get theirs in?
Not yet.
Because they have to be in by Monday, correct?
No, the deadline is next Thursday. Deadline's next Thursday for the L-2s. Operation of the Capital Improvement Committee. Commissioners, this is the fourth year of utilizing the Capital Improvement Committee to review capital improvements, equipment for expenditures in fiscal year 2025. A capital improvement request form must be completed for any project expenditure over 25,000 to be scored by the Capital Improvement Committee. Recommendations then made by the Capital Improvement Committee are submitted to the Commissioners for review. And Commissioners, the recommended capital improvement, capital equipment purchases for fiscal year 2025 are three sheriff vehicles, a probation vehicle, buildings and grounds pickup, asphalt replacement, sheriff's safety wall, civil software, that's actually, that is incorrect, I apologize. We did have civil software for the Sheriff's Office, but after some conversations and trying to determine priority, there was a determination that it was going to be budgeted for improvements for the building department. So the actual, what was budgeted was for building department software upgrades, either to utilize the existing software that they have to upgrade that or to move towards something different. Civil shop, civil software for the Sheriff's Office is going to be delayed probably a year and going to be potentially requested next year. So I apologize, that is in error. And then two pickups, and then a CAT fusion plates for the Road Department.
What are fusion plates?
They go on to the pieces of equipment. So when they unload a piece of equipment, they take all that time to like hook on to the snow blade after that. So this is a, is it like an instant connect?
Well, it's a quick connect.
Yeah, like a quick connect. So it makes it a lot easier to change pieces of equipment out.
They can change buckets, they can change blades, whatever.
That's like six of them or something like that. It's quite few of them. I don't mean.
Commissioners, here's a graph that just kind of shows the costs and what was funded for the CIP programs. Ultimately, the largest expenditures in motor pool for the vehicles, for the Sheriff's Office, for buildings and grounds, and then for the new vehicle for probation. Commissioners, this is the full budget, the budget report. We will make sure that this is posted on our website, as well as if any member of the public would like a copy, they can make contact with our office, and we will provide them with this. If you want to pull up, you just have to press Control, Gabby.
Doug, did we get that in our package?
You did.
Save that. So we got this presentation, but I don't know that we got the budget.
Should.
Can I just link to it?
Yes. Pull it up.
Gabby, it's not, let me open.
It's all loaded up. Okay, what we can do then, Commissioners.
I don't want to open either.
I apologize.
So if you guys will just send us those budgets.
We'll send you the, yeah. I can provide you with.
No worries at all. You can send me an electronic one, so I can make sure.
Commissioners, some of the highlights that I would like to just to point out to you is our medical insurance did not go up as much as we thought. It went up 5.9%, so we made the adjustment with our medical insurance to reflect the 5.9 increase. I mean, actually, in fiscal year 2024, we overbudgeted, so we were able to reduce that. The retirement, Commissioners, we did get new rates from Mercy, so we made that adjustment in the general fund for the benefits. That top section is the benefit section.
So did that rate go up just a little?
Just a little bit, it did.
Like 4.6% or something?
Gabby, do you remember?
Mercy rates went depending upon, you know, the employer, force form or not, so for each one.
1%?
Just some, some of the items that were kind of discussed in the, in late in the budget workshops, I want to make sure that the Commissioners were aware were included in the budgets, in the Sheriff's budget. There, we did, in fact, budget for the K-9 unit, and I just want to make sure that the Commissioners were aware of that that is, in fact, in the budget, funded for 50,000 at this point in time. That amount is a estimate cost. The Commissioners were made aware during the budget workshop that they might have a individual come on to the force in a part-time role that has experience, so that potentially could reduce that cost. But that request was included in the budget. Again, I just want to make sure that the Commissioners were aware of that. Yeah, I'm just trying to point out some of the highlights. If there's any questions that the Commissioners have, please, please let me know. Commissioners, also in the, if you can look at the 100-10, the Buildings and Grounds, you will see that the employee full-time budget did drastically increase, but that is for the funding of the positions that have been vetted through HR. And then the contracts janitorial, we reduced that down to $10,000, and that would just be for any type of supplies. I'm just going to kind of move along and kind of, I hit some highlights. Commissioners, in 100-18, the contributions that were requested, I want to make sure that the Commissioners are aware that all of those contributions that have been requested have been budgeted for for fiscal year 2025. That includes the contribution requested by the Soil and Water Conservation District, Squaw Creek Soil Conservation District, Treasure Valley Transit, Long Valley Preservation, Escade Senior Center, McCall Senior Center, the Animal Damage Control, McPaws Contribution, the Shepherd's Home Contribution, Youth Advisory Coalition, Rise Up to Thrive, and Ignite Idaho. All of those contributions requests that you heard from have been budgeted for for fiscal year 2025.
A quick question on the opioid settlement funds, the 24,000, is that all we spent out of that fund?
That is correct, Mr. Chairman, for this fiscal year.
There's more than that in there.
There is. We have carryover about 86,000 right now. And we, yes, and we anticipate getting another 80,000 next year. So we are trying to get the word out through V-Corp that if there's any nonprofits that are wanting to make a request for the opioid settlement funds, that the process is, of course, to present to the Commissioners, but also to get support from V-Corp. So we, we will, I anticipate we will see some more nonprofits reaching out to the county for those funds.
Doug, I think we need to put together a workshop to discuss this process moving forward, as we've discussed this year. And I think with the V-Corp funds also, or the opioid settlement funds, I think we need to do a request like January. Everyone requests what they want, and we spend that year's dollars. And I think we need to do the same thing with this, and maybe do January, February, and we create a pool of funds so that everyone has a chance to come in and talk about, you know, their process and their project. And then we, we know every year, we're going to be spending this much money in whatever that share is.
So I, how I'm.
We're getting more and more requests.
Agreed. So what I'm hearing you say is like the county just set up an amount and then have entities present.
Be like a grant request.
Okay.
Yeah, so we set aside.
I thought V-Corp was kind of doing that for us.
On the opioid funds.
For the opioid funds, V-Corp, I guess, is vetting those requests, right? I mean, it's.
When do you usually get that money? Is it in January?
We get it periodically throughout the year, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, it's periodically.
We just need to take a one-time, you know, date, whatever date certain is, see what we have in the budget, allocate for that next year.
We only get opioid once a year, is that right?
No, we get it throughout the year.
We get opioid funds, Commissioner Thompson, throughout the year.
Sporadically.
Sporadically. We'll get 3,000 here, 3,000 there, but we do have a carry amount right now that we've received, I believe, it's around 70, 86,000 to 76,000. I have the figure on the computer, I can tell you after this what, what our current carryover is.
Is that kind of a normal amount that we'll get through year?
I think so.
Or is it just fluctuating?
We think so. We think that at this point in time, with the opioid dollars, Valley County is going to receive approximately 80,000 each year.
Okay. That's why you got that penciled in.
Yes, sir.
We can't continue to increase some of these line items without eventually just eating into all of our bill funding and any kind of savings account we have.
Exactly.
We're going to have to just look at the ORL budget. So let's try maybe if we could, something in like, I don't know, we're going to have to get the word out, so maybe November, do a workshop or something like that, and then get the word out, and we'll use our social committee or somebody else, you know, something to help us figure out what's the need is in the community for these types of programs.
Commissioners, I apologize for going back, but if we could go back to the Sheriff's budget, I want to make sure that it's also noted that there was a recommendation from Prosecuting Attorney and from HR to have a better policing policy through Lexipol. That was a significant increase. So there is a request to have that expenditure increase significantly.
What is that?
That is 104,0689-0069, policing policy. It's going from 2,500 to 31,000.
Holy, hi.
But the, the, that's a one-time cost. It should be reduced after this cost, but there is a feeling that this policy is, lessens the liability for Valley County by having the policy that they're proposing to move towards through Lexipol.
Is this, it would have been nice to have them come talk about it, but is this a policy that is nationwide, that is statewide? How does it change what we already have?
So it advances it, and it's more specific, and it is a policy, I think, I'm not, don't quote me, but I believe it has been adopted nationwide more often than not, right? This is, the policy that we had in place now was developed by a former sheriff, but I think the policy that they're proposing on going to is a nationwide adopted policy.
This policy is for.
I'm in favor of that.
Covering incidents or anything?
Correct. Well, it provides clear guidance and expectations of what the, of what their policy is regarding events.
Right.
So, Commissioner Thompson, you were correct.
Standardizes the police force.
Yes.
Along with their other partners, so I'm pulling in favor of that.
It's just a significant increase.
Not in the general?
No, it's.
Commissioners, I also just want to point out the policing policy for the jail is also increasing to that Lexipol, but it, the cost is 36,000. So those are significant increases to the policing policy expenditure line. But it is being recommended by the Prosecuting Attorney's Office, and it is going to potentially reduce in the liability, right?
That's another 60,000.
That's in the budget too.
It's in the budget. We budgeted for this.
We budgeted, we're taking it out of our savings account.
Doug, just real quick, these are one-time.
They're one-time costs, but they will be a maintenance, there'll be an annual subscription fee, right? But these initial costs, it's my understanding that these large expenditures are one-time costs.
Okay. Something to watch, I guess.
Yes, sir.
And Doug, salaries for dispatchers going up quite a bit. Do they have an additional position in there? 1280405?
I believe we. Or was it? My understanding, Commissioners, there was a request for another supervisor position.
Who are you looking at, Sherry?
The 911 Communications. It would be on our page 11.
So let's. I think it's correct, Commissioner Moplin. Sorry.
Are you looking here at the 6% increase?
I'm looking at the 23,000. Is that just because of the salary adjustments?
Yes.
A couple of dispatchers got certified throughout the year, so they moved up. So that increase, then they get the raise on top of that, so.
Okay.
Commissioners, if we could go back to 100-21, I just want to also point out that the position that has been approved through Planning and Zoning was funded, and that is in the 100-21-0402 expense line. But you can see that that position was, in fact, budgeted for as well. Commissioners, after the presentation from YCAP, we did budget the contribution to YCAP. I don't know if there were any expectations before we provide YCAP with that funding, but we did, in fact, budget for that, and I don't know if that was, is accurate or not, but we did budget for that funding to YCAP.
That's the 24-3.
I wasn't here, so you guys.
That was the 24-3, and they said they were going to.
What are they doing for those funds?
They're trying to find somebody local to help run the Department of Valley County. I don't remember that conversation.
So they'll have, actually, somebody sitting in office?
They have somebody, they have somebody, don't they?
They do. They presented to the Commissioners that they do, in fact, have an employee that is up here, but I think that there were requirements that were going to be expected to show the Valley County exactly what they're doing in our community before the contribution is made.
And we asked them to come in like on a quarterly basis.
Correct.
They had a whole bunch of them come in here.
But based on their presentation, we did, in fact, fund that. And I just want to make sure that the Commissioners were fully aware.
So is YCAP be looked at like Ignite or any of that, or is that, this is a different organization?
That'd be, Commissioner Thompson, that'd be a decision from the Commissioners.
I mean, I think we should put them in the bundle. If they're providing services, just like all these other people. just like all these other people. And I think it would be helpful, especially for Catlin next year, that we, we write down what each one of these nonprofits do, and how many people they touch, and, you know, kind of what their impact is on the community. I think that would be helpful, do that.
Commissioners, that concludes the, the general fund, and what I'll do is move on to the road department and just kind of point out some highlights, if the commissioners are inclined to hear some of the highlights. I specifically want to point out the $1,500,000 that has been budgeted for capital buildings. Commissioners, as you are fully aware, that you have committed a portion of the LA CTF funds, the ARPA dollars, however you want to refer to them, to utilize for the Gold Dust Building, but the projected cost is, is significantly higher than the $3.5 million that the commissioners have committed, so we did in fact budget 1.5 million from the road department budget to assist with that cost.
Yep.
Doug, that's why we're taking the million out of paving, so next year he's not planning on doing any paving.
That's correct.
Okay.
And what they're also, Commissioners, it's my understanding is with, Dan is going to look at the, instead of contracting some of those projects out, is specifically having Valley County do those projects. So I do anticipate, again, I don't want to speak out of term, but I anticipate that Dan is going to be looking at the master road agreement and making formal recommendations to the commissioners as well in the future. So I think that for next fiscal year, a significant addition to the budget is that 1.5 million for the cost of the building.
And we knew that was coming, and we'd have to adjust elsewhere, so.
Yes, ma'am. Just kind of-
Doug, one question, the road development funds.
Yes.
So we already know that we have some RDAs out there that are gonna be large, that's gonna far surpass that. So did Dan say anything about needing that increased?
No, $500,000 at this point in time seems to be the, the requested amount for the development agreements. That includes any that we have on the books now, and any that are potentially going to be, any new projects or any new developments that are beginning to be coming on in the future.
So 1.2 is what's on that apartments that should start next year. So that was their portion of the road development agreement. So what happens if they just go over this?
It's problematic. I mean, we would have to have another public hearing. If, if, yeah, so-
So we all have to open the budget?
We would have to open up the budget. Yes, ma'am. I guess what I'm understanding, with the new, there's an expectation that they would be making a contribution of 1.2 million to the county for a, a development agreement, that then the county would have to do that work?
And that's the question still. Are they gonna do the work, or are we gonna do the work?
Gotcha. At this point in time, that was, I, I don't know if that, I'll be honest, I don't know if that development was brought to the attention of the road department, that that potential development agreement for that would be over $1 million. I don't think that that was included.
That's not bad, I don't know if Dan does, so.
If that is the case for next fiscal year, that the, it's an expectation that the work is done next year, I do anticipate we would have to open up the budget. Commissioners, I'd like to point out the health district, unfortunately, that went up 14%. Of the, Central District Health requested an increase of 14% from Valley County. We did in fact budget for that, so you can see that that is in the budget.
Did you hear anything on the magistrate court, and whether the Supreme Court was gonna take over some of that? There's still an ongoing-
The only thing that they would take over is the law clerks. And we are proposing a bill this, this year to run through legislation that the law clerks would be paid for by the state. We are in a, I guess, a luxury, because we pay a minimal amount. Ada County pays the majority of the law clerk for our district court judge.
Oh, nice.
We pay a very small amount.
Senator, thank you, Mel.
We do appreciate their contribution to that.
Ron, thanks, next time.
Senator, thank you, Larry.
Commissioners, I'd like to look at solid waste, as you, as you can see in the budget for solid waste, the capital buildings, that has been funded or requested is 3.9 million. Commissioners, you have heard from Facilities Director Scott Klingon on the recommendations from Great West Engineering, 3.9 million would cover that full upgrade. Commissioners, I would also like to report that with the remaining cash that we have, with the existing rates, I do not see that the commissioners need to increase fees for solid waste, either on the commercial side or for the residential side. Now, that can always change, but for next fiscal year, I don't feel that the commissioners need to increase those, and we have the funding to fund this improvement. Commissioners, you have heard that there's a, a need, it's not just a want, there, that solid waste transfer site is in disrepair, and definitely needs to be approved. So we have that included in the budget for fiscal year 2025. Commissioners, again, I'd like to point out another significant increase that we got hit with, that's in tort. Our liability insurance went up 26%. You heard from ICRA at the conference that you attended why there was a, a need for that increase. We did in fact budget for that. It was a shock, I guess, to see that significant of an increase, but we are in fact budgeting for that 26% increase that Valley County is getting charged with. Commissioners, one, in the weed budget, I want to point out that's- We did budget in the milfoil, $35,000 for milfoil eradication. It is, the commissioners have something on their agenda in the next couple of weeks when the Department of Agriculture is gonna be presenting on the condition of the Payette Lake regarding the milfoil. There is a belief that Valley County needs to continue with its effort to eradicate the milfoil, so we did in fact budget $35,000 to assist with that.
What budget is that in?
That is in weeds, 127-00-0440-0011.
Doug, do you remember the contract for that was $20,000 the last time we did milfoil? For the divers?
The divers, correct.
Wait, so that's probably gonna do that.
I anticipate that there's gonna be-
It'd be close to covering it.
Yeah. But I do feel that the Valley County is gonna get approached to assist with the eradication of that program.
Yeah. Does the state put into that?
State has, yes, and the, the presentation that we're getting is that the efforts need to be improved and increased.
Doug, I don't know where it would go, but I'll ask in this section. So we're, we are starting to hear a lot about the waterways management plan and testing waters, and Leonard Long's doing it because he does here on Lake Cascade, Payette Lake also needs water testing done, and that is part of that plan. Where would we put something like that?
Great question, Commissioner Moplin.
It's in waterways, I don't know-
I mean, waterways funds are typically for, I think we would have to work with the waterways committee to determine if, if that is something that they should fund or not, because the funding that they get is from border registrations. I'd have to take a look at the code to see if those, I, I don't know. If the commissioners are inclined, I think, just to be safe, I think in the future, should probably budget for in the general fund.
Okay.
Would be my recommendations, just shooting from the hip right now.
I think we need to establish a fund so that we can actually inform and empower that water to waste.
I would also, again, and not to get into politics, but the money that's being collected by the city of McCall, what's that being utilized for? I think Valley County should probably have some conversations with the city of McCall regarding that revenue that they're generating. I, I don't know, Commissioner Moplin.
We just own like 99% of that lake, and they own 1%, so.
Yeah. And I, and I, again, I think Valley County probably does have some responsibility, but I think that there should be further conversations as well. Again, that, the clerk probably shouldn't be weighing in on this, but that's just-
It's a longer conversation.
I think longer conversations definitely need to occur regarding waterway study, and then the existing study that had was conducted, are those implementations being done? Again, for a different time and-
I don't know how much it's gonna cost, and that might be something that when the guys doing the milfoil are up here, we can have a conversation with them about their capacity to do things like that at the state level. So I will make a note for next year's budget that we need to include that cost.
Commissioners, I believe that I have, I have a couple more slides. I apologize if it's taken up a significant amount of time, but I just really want to make sure that the commissioners have a full, clear understanding of what's being requested, that the public has a full, clear understanding of the Valley County budget. Commissioners, the next is how to, the, the amount to be levied. So with the proposed budget that's being presented, the amount to be levied would be That is with the 3% and new construction. If the commissioners do adopt this budget, and this is the levy amount they decide on, the levy rate would be .000847085. Property tax levy would be approximately $84.70 per $100,000 value of a home. That is an increase of, I believe it's about 27 cents from last year's levy rate. Commissioners, now we're also required to have a formal public hearing regarding on the Title III funds. There is a requirement to have a public hearing regarding how Valley County anticipates or is projected to expend their Title III funds. Valley County Firewise Grants would be $50,000, I think the commissioners are fully aware of that program. Community Firewise Education and Outreach of $25,000. This was requested by Mara. This would include, not limited to firewise brochures, education programs, seminars, community firewise signs, wildfire prevention services, community outreach and marketing. The last request for Title III funds would be for the mobile risk assessment of $49,000.
Doug, are you sure that that wasn't $49,000 a year?
It is not. Long's asking for it annually.
I understand it's an annual request, Commissioner-
I thought it was $29,000 or something.
You know, I, I think we just leave this as is, but I think we need to have, I was not able to meet with Long because of all the fires, but once this calms down a minute, I think we need to have this conversation on that mobile risk assessment. If it's coming out of Title III funds, Mara should be in charge of that, in my opinion, and not Long. And so I think we need to talk about how all of that plays out, and how that impacts. I mean, that mobile risk assessment product is already out there, they've upgraded it, we've already paid Cara to redo a website that they can all get to. So there's, you know, we're down the path a bit on this, but $49,000 a year is way too much money, in my opinion, for this kind of work. So. Then we leave it in the budget and figure it out from there.
Speaking of GIS, didn't we decide to go out for that job? When we went out for it, we can't get anybody to apply, so where we are on that?
Mr. Chairman, we have-
So we're gonna keep the contract with Cara?
That is correct, Mr. Chairman.
Till we get that position for her.
But I do believe we funded a full-time position, that we did, we, thank you.
I thought we did. And I take part of this mobile risk assessment money is to pay towards that position, towards that work. That's what we need to find out from Long, what exactly are we getting for $49,000 a year? Whether it's adding new parcels and new updates, or if it's to pay each fire department to go out and do a mobile sys, risk assessment on parcels, or what? I don't know.
Mr. Chairman, I, I don't know either, and I apologize, and I don't know the, the answer. I do know it's just been requested. Commissioners, with that, that concludes the clerk's office presentation of the fiscal year 2025 budget.
Well, this is a public hearing, do I just need to ask if there's anyone in the audience?
Absolutely.
Anyone online that wants to comment, or has a conversation or a take on this? Now is the time.
We don't do online comments, Mr. Chairman.
So please let that record show that there was none. Is there anything else I need to do? We're gonna approve this budget next year, correct? Early next week?
Chairman, that's correct. The commissioners will adopt the proposed budget via resolution on September 3rd.
And we're doing the salary and all that stuff next week?
That's correct.
So then I'm gonna close the public hearing at 1:48, and come back to our regular agenda.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Good job, Doug.
Thank you, Doug, thank you, Gabby, for all the work that you do. Really impressive.
Gabby, if you will mute us until 2 o'clock, we'll see everyone back here at 2 for the final part.